Have a meeting come to order. Worthington City Council Regular Meeting, 5:30 PM, Monday, August 12th, 2024, City Hall Council Chambers. If I could have everybody stand, the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I want to welcome everybody tonight. We have no additions or corrections to the agendas, so we have them. Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We've got, what's that? We've got a public hearing portion of Highway 59 reconstruction and jurisdictional transfer, case item one.
Motion for open hearing.
Throw from the bonders.
Okay.
Okay, we have motion seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Hearing presentation, please.
Mindot is proceeding with plans for the reconstruction of Highway 59 from approximately a half mile north of Interstate 90 all the way to Highway 60. Project includes safety improvements at several intersections, grading and pavement, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and water main replacement, lighting and sidewalk. This section of Highway 59, just south on Interstate 90 to Highway 60, will be a jurisdictional transfer or turnback to the city of Worthington after construction. Peter Inglemeyer, representative of Mindot, will present the final layout and answer questions as required by state statutes. Peter?
All right, well, good evening, everyone. My name is Peter Inglemeyer. I am a project manager with Mindot District 7 out of Mankato. And as part of the public hearing, I'll give just about a 10-minute presentation on the project background. In summary, go over municipal consent, what it is and why it's needed for this project. Go over cost estimate, maintenance responsibilities as it applies to the city, and just overall project schedule. So, project location, the project starts about a half mile north of I-90. It goes south along Humiston Avenue, and then east on Oxford Street, and then the project ends on the east end of Oxford Street, just short of the Highway 60 roundabout. And so just kind of high-level project summary, Mindot's planning to reconstruct Highway 59 from I-90 to Highway 60, so the entire project limits is planning to be reconstructed. Some key project components include three roundabouts. So, two of those roundabouts will be, one at each of the I-90 ramp terminals on Humiston Avenue, and then also a roundabout at Ryan's Road. We're planning to replace the signal system at the intersection of Oxford Street and Humiston Avenue, improve pedestrian facilities, so namely sidewalk that's planning to be put along, majority of the corridor on both sides of the roadway. Utility replacement includes storm sewer, and then also working with the city on sanitary and water main replacement along the corridor, reconstructing the Humiston Avenue frontage road on the east side of Humiston Avenue, and then there will be lighting throughout the corridor. So that's kind of high-level project summary. Another unique component to this project is Mindot is planning to transfer, do a jurisdictional transfer, a turnback to the city of Worthington upon completion of construction. And those limits will be from just south of the eastbound I-90 ramp terminal over to Highway 60. So essentially, kind of that in-town portion will be the turnback. Everything from I-90 to the north will remain a state highway. So municipal consent, what is it and why is it needed for this project? So municipal consent is a municipality's approval of Mindot's final layout for a project on a trunk highway when state statute requires that approval. So essentially, it's when Mindot has a project within municipality and we need certain triggers, then we're required to have municipal consent or approval on the project. And this approval is by a resolution passed by the council. So municipal consent, that package, or the consent process was kicked off back in June when Mindot submitted a municipal consent package to the city. That package included the project layout, so the project design. It included a good faith cost estimate with overall project costs, but also city estimated cost responsibilities. And then there was a letter with it that included project purpose and need, background, location, description, and maintenance responsibilities. So essentially, this presentation is a summary of that letter in the package. And so Mindot requires municipal consent when a trunk highway meets one of the following. So whether it alters access, increases or reduces traffic capacity on the highway, or if it requires acquisition of permanent right-of-way. So that can be in the form of fee or some sort of permanent easement. With this project, we're meeting all three of those for municipal consent. So just a couple examples for each one specifically for the roadway. So the top part of there with the colored layout, we're reducing traffic capacity on Humiston Avenue from I-90 to the north. So existing conditions have Humiston Avenue as a four-lane roadway. With this project, we're proposing to drop it down to two lanes, so one lane in each direction. Altering access, that includes primarily closures along Humiston Avenue. So we're planning to close the access from Darling Drive and from the south end of the frontage road to Humiston Avenue. So those are the two other pictures. And then we are also planning to acquire right-of-way throughout the corridor. This is just one snip. This is the Ryan's Road intersection, which is planned to become a roundabout. Just showed a couple areas there where we're encroaching into the existing right-of-way, planning to get some permanent right-of-way needs. So again, this is just one example. We'll be getting right-of-way kind of throughout the corridor as needed for construction. And so that's kind of the background of municipal consent. The next part is the cost estimate. So back when Mindot submitted a municipal consent package in June 14th, we included this cost estimate. And the total project construction cost at that time was about $27.6 million. And then the table here shows the city and the local cost responsibilities at that time. And so kind of the first thing to focus on is the yellow box, about $4.2 million. That is the city total project cost responsibilities for the city's sanitary and water main and for improvements made to Darling Drive to bring it up to an MSAS road, so a municipal state aid street. The construction cost for that is about $3.9 million when you include about $300,000 of construction engineering. That's where you get the $4.2 million. Construction engineering is generally a set percentage-based item based off of the construction cost. So we use 8%, and that's for things like in construction, like surveying, inspection, materials testing. There was also a local cost, the green column, for about $890,000, and that is for Casaw 35. So the west leg of the project, there's about a one-block leg, that is Casaw 35, Oxford Street. And that was originally going to be a local cost with the allocation to be determined by the city and the county. And so that's June 14th. When we, June 26th came along, we received word from the USDOT that Mindot was awarded a RACE grant. So it's a federal discretionary grant that Mindot submitted an application earlier in the year. And so great news, both for Mindot and the community. And one of the components of that application was that Mindot would include the local cost, so that Casaw 35 construction cost, as part of the RACE grant funding. So ultimately, what that means is that will reduce the local cost participation amount. We're still working with the USDOT and local partners on figuring out exactly what that amounts would be. And that'll be something that as we continue with the project and those discussions, we'll coordinate with the city and the county on how that all works. So the yellow column for the sanitary and water main and the MSAS, those are intended to remain that city cost, so that's that $4.2 million. Next, the city maintenance responsibilities. So this can be split up into two different areas. So one is within the turnback. So I kind of highlighted there the turnback area again, just to kind of make it a little bit easier to see where it is. And so within the turnback, after construction, the, this portion of Highway 59 is planned to become a city street. Now, at that point, it's city-owned, it's city-maintained and operated, so any maintenance activities, future projects, would be a city responsibility outside of the turnback where it remains a state highway, so everything from I-90 to the north. Everything is Mindot's main responsibility, except for some items. So the main items where it would be city maintenance responsibility are sidewalk and trails, pedestrian facilities. The city would be responsible for things like snow removal, spot panel replacements, cutting grass in the boulevards, things like that. And also any sort of future landscaping that's included with the project. So if there's things like native grasses, plantings, boulevards, or other unique landscaping features, then that would be city responsibility as well. And that's something that as we get further along into the final design here, we'll coordinate with the city and have those conversations on what that looks like, what's included or not included. And finally, just project schedule. So for about the past year and a half, two years, we've been working on the preliminary design of the project. So working with the city, county, and community on different alternatives, and ultimately we came up with the preferred alternative last fall in the fall of '23. This past spring, in the spring of 2024, we completed the preliminary design. And so now we're transitioning from that prelim design with the public hearing, municipal consent process, and going into the final design process from the rest of the summer until the fall of 2026. We currently have a scheduled letting planned for October of 2026, so that's when the project goes out for bid to the contractor, and then that will lead to construction in 2027 and 2028. So it's a two-year construction process. Tentatively, high-level construction staging is in year one, 2027. We're planning to construct Humiston Avenue while keeping Oxford Street open to traffic. And then in year two, we just flip that around, construct Oxford Street, and keep the newly constructed Humiston Avenue open for traffic. One of the primary reasons for that is to help reduce the impacts to community, to the businesses along the corridor, and really just try to focus on where that construction is taking place over that two-year span. In that winter season between 2027 and 2028, we're planning to open the roadway up and have it be open for the winter months. With that, that is the presentation from a high level, and we will open it up to any questions or comments. So thank you.
Any questions? Testimonials?
When you're constructing, doing the, I call it Highway 59, Oxford Street, and that's in the construction, the police department is located north of the interstate, how are we going to add that with good access into town?
That'll be something as we, because we're at a high level, just getting started on like the staging and traffic control for the project. So that'll be something that as we get into that, we'll be communicating closer with police department, EMS, fire and ambulance, to, you know, figure out how that will all work, those coordinating needs. So not quite there yet, but that's something that we generally do with every project to help make sure that's facilitated and open.
And all the fire stations got a couple offices that are dedicated to the law enforcement as well. Chad?
I'll again put on the record, just because I like to do that, because I've bent their ears plenty of times on different things, but since we're in minute-taking and stuff like that, we had a lot of discussions and a lot of talks on the Highway 59 North stuff, on design principles, layouts, things of that sort, where we went over that stuff. We didn't have as much discussion of that sort, near as much, on the Oxford Street reconstruction, which will be the following year, and I know there's probably more that can and will come. But I will again put in my pitch for consideration of a look at the Oxford Roundabout on 60 for a dedicated right-hand turn onto Oxford Street to take a look at that, just because I wanted in minutes. That's all.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
This is a chance for anybody to speak on this?
Anybody in the audience? Anybody have any comments, questions? Chad?
If you would, we hear from a lot of people because it's easier to approach us, because we get to say yea or nay on things, and we get to sit through all of the meetings on design, layout, things of that nature. While some people, at least some that are fairly vocal, have, you know, hatred for roundabouts and things of that nature, I would like to state that as much as maybe we don't like to say that we love them or understand them, the principles that are put through to, to look at these designs, you guys have engineered safety studies, layout designs, traffic flow patterns, to look at, all kinds of statistics to provide those things to this. It's not just five of us sitting up here saying yea or nay to this. It's input and study and design that has gone into this, opposed to we like it or we don't. Am I correct pretty much in that, I mean, opposed to, we don't, we don't get to say, well, we like that a lot better, so let's do that. And then you say, okay, we'll design that for you.
Sure. Yeah, so I think kind of, you know, as part of the preliminary design, we did do a lot of alternatives analysis, where, you know, we looked at different alternatives of, you know, all roundabout signals, different intersection types. And as part of that analysis, it included coordination with the city, lots of workshops, council meetings, coordinating with the county on that, and also just public outreach. So, you know, as part of that preliminary design process, we held a couple of houses. I believe we did a online survey with some of that alternatives analysis. And so we really, you know, brought it all together, if you will, to look at all the different alternatives effects and ultimately, you know, work with the city on presenting those options and finding, you know, what is the preferred alternative.
So many times we get the words, you know, that people don't like, brought up in regular topic, like, we know what road design is here, sitting in these chairs that make decisions. I don't. So I lean on people who work in that field and have that. Why are there medians here? Why do you do a roundabout here? What is the purpose of it? What does it create for the project? And it is those reasons why we brought up our concerns, our suggestions, our comments that we've heard from public, to, to get that final project put together. And frankly, what some may or may not, when they'll see or hear the story that this comes out of what's going to be done, will say, well, you guys are a bunch of idiots. You know, we, we should have done this or that. Well, we've had all kinds of public input presentations, availability for people, and we've heard all of the data, and we did get some of our suggestions and thoughts and concerns addressed and changed because, heck, we could have slapped another roundabout in there. But we brought up enough concern and enough local input of why we felt concerned for those that you guys went back, looked at the data, looked at everything, and said, okay, we hear you, we understand that, we can do this or that, and adjust these things and make that happen. So this is a little cover-your-tail speech, but it really is way more than five people sitting in a, in a council chambers saying, yea, we like it or yea, we don't, and this is what we came up with. It's not the case. Thank you for listening and, and having these meetings, so people don't, can't just point a finger and say, boy, you designed a really cruddy road. And, and I can say, no, I didn't. I had input in it, and so did you, and here's why these happened.
Anybody else have anything?
I know I live on the north side of Oxford Street anyways, and my two cents is that it's troublesome to make a left turn many ways, like HH repair, or I'm on Mark Douglas or Douglas anyways, that tried to do a left turn when JBS was getting out from work anyways, and it's continuous traffic, so people have different speeds that they travel, so you end up having to take two or three deep breaths anyways and wait for an opening anyways. Yeah, and I get, I get, you know, that it's, it's good to keep the traffic flowing anyways too, you know. And when they first started checking on the town hall meetings for this and stuff too, you know, I always thought that taking the center divider out and having your turn lanes there into businesses like they have on Minnesota and 41st and Sioux Falls, but, and brought up that most of your accidents happen at controlled intersections, you know, your stoplights anyways, and didn't have a, an answer for that either. This is a nice design. I do like, a little bit nice to get the lights down the center, you got to have wider sidewalks, you know, people walking and biking a lot more, gets them off of the highway.
Anybody else?
Move, close, vote carry.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Action on hearing. All right, thank you. Onto a public hearing on residential property tax abatement, KJSM Investments. Motion to open hearing.
Second.
Motion seconded. All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing is open.
Exhibit 1A is a copy of the City Residential Property Tax Abatement Program application submitted by KJSM Investments. The applicant is seeking approval of a tax abatement for construction of a two-unit condominium on Cherrywood Lane. Staff has reviewed the application and concluded that it meets all parameters of the program guidelines. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the application to comply with state statutes regarding tax abatement. A public hearing was scheduled for tonight to allow for public comment on the proposed abatement. Should council concur with staff's recommendation, it may do so by adopting the resolution that was provided in Exhibit 1B after completion of the public hearing.
Okay, any testimony? Questions?
Move, close, vote carry.
Second. We have a motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Onto public hearing.
I'd like a motion to approve the property tax abatement.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, onto public hearing on commercial property tax abatement, NTRA Properties LLC.
Move, close, vote carry.
Okay, motion seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
NTRA Properties has submitted a tax abatement request pursuant to Minnesota statute 469.1813 and 116J.993 through 116J.995. The request is to wait taxes for a period of five years in accordance with the city's commercial and industrial tax abatement program. The applicant plans to construct an approximately 26,000 square foot retail showroom and shop facility. Subject property is legally described below. Subject property is located on Bioscience Drive on the west side of Highway 59. Staff has reviewed the request and concluded that it meets all the parameters of the guidelines, which were included in Exhibit 2A. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the application to comply with state statutes regarding tax abatement. A public hearing was scheduled for tonight to allow for public comment on the proposed abatement. Should council concur with staff's recommendation, it will do so by adopting the resolution that was included as Exhibit 2B after the completion of the public hearing and authorize staff to enter into a development agreement with the applicant.
Okay, we have any testimonies? Questions, comments?
Need to close public hearing.
Second. Okay, we have motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Move to adopt proposed Exhibit 2B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Onto consent agendas. We've got the city council meeting minutes, July 22nd, 2024, minutes from boards and commissions, Water and Light Commission meeting minutes of August 5th, 2024, planning commission meeting minutes of August 6th and 9th of 2024. Council business, we got applications for temporary on-sale liquor license for St. Mary's School, application for exemption from lawful gambling permit, St. Mary's Church, application for parade permit to block streets, King Turkey Day Inc., application for temporary on-sale liquor license, King Turkey Day Inc., management statements, municipal liquor store income statement for the period of January 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2024, Olson Park Statement of Revenue and Expenditures, Budget and Actual for the period of January 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2024, Fieldhouse Statement of Revenue and Expenditures, Budget and Actual for the period of January 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2024, and Bill's Table.
Move, approve, consent agenda.
Second. Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Onto city council administration.
This is a resolution approving the final layout for state project 5304-41 on trunk Highway 59. Commissioner of Transportation has prepared the final layout for state project 5304-41 on truck Highway 59 from half-mile north of Interstate 90 to trunk Highway 60 within the corporate limits of Worthington for roadway infrastructure improvements. Council is requested to approve the resolution that's shown as Exhibit 5 for layout in conformance with Minnesota statutes 161.162 to 161.167, state project 5304-41, trunk Highway 59.
Questions? Motion? Second. We have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'd like to take a moment here to introduce S A who recently joined our team at the Worthington Police Department. S A was born in Burma. His family fled Burma due to civil unrest and spent eight years in a refugee camp in Thailand. Family was able to leave the camp as a result of a United Nations program and moved to the United States. S A's family eventually settled in Marshall, Minnesota, where he graduated from Marshall High School in twenty twenty. After high school, he joined the National Guard, later attended and graduated from Minnesota West in twenty twenty-three with a degree in law enforcement. S A started with W P D in February and is currently working full-time shifts for the department. S A is another great example of the American dream, and we are grateful to have him as part of our team. Tonight, Officer A will take his officer oath and will be eventually welcomed, will be welcomed, officially welcomed to the Worthington Police Department.
Black girl.
I saw you.
I saw it.
Do something square.
Do something last square.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And thankfully.
And thankfully.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Discharge of the duties of a police officer.
Discharge of the duty of the police officer.
With the police department.
With the police department.
And in the city of Worthington.
And for the city of Worthington.
During my continuance of employment.
Here my continued employment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Let's get a picture.
You have your family?
Yeah.
Get one here, so we'll get a picture.
Don't knock too shy.
The way it happens once.
Can he have one, take picture with him? Yep.
Do that.
Squeeze in.
Squeeze in.
Nobody invite.
Leave.
Six, twelve pitch.
One more.
One more.
Three seconds.
On to acceptance of some program funds donation.
New City Buffet, Wayne Incorporated generously donated five hundred dollars to the Worthington Police Department to benefit public safety programs. Contribution to utilize as part of a future public safety equipment purchase. Council actions are requested to adopt a resolution showing exhibit one, accepting the five hundred dollar donation.
Move to accept with thanks. Second. Motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carry.
In another acceptance of program funds donation, Rodney Cullman generously donated five hundred dollars to the Worthington Police Department to benefit the public safety K-9 program. Contribution to utilize as part of a future K-9 program equipment purchase. Council actions requested to adopt a resolution showing exhibit two, accepting the five hundred dollar donation.
Motion and seconded, any further discussion?
Good thanks.
Yes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carry.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, council business engineering.
The, uh, task order number thirty with Bolton Mink is to provide design services for sanitary sewer and trunk water main along Oxford Street and across Homestead Avenue on Trump Highway fifty-nine. Turnback of Trump Highway fifty-nine, Homestead Avenue and Oxford Street will take place after the reconstruction of the highway. The existing sanitary sewer system and water mains serving Oxford Street along with a water main crossing on Homestead Avenue have reached their design life, need to be replaced as part of the reconstruction project. Public utilities is budgeted for the work to be done as part of the highway construction project being done by the Minnesota Department of Transportation. Combining the utility work with the highway reconstruction will save money by eliminating pavement removal and replacement since this will be done as part of the street reconstruction. Task order number thirty, which is exhibit number one, provides for engineering services to design the new sewer, water mains, and connecting services. The task order is not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars without prior approval from the council. The construction work will be included in the Trump Highway fifty-nine reconstruction contract to be done in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Maybe be twenty-eight, seven and twenty-eight?
Yes, it would be, thank you very much. And the staff recommends the approval of task order number thirty. One of the things we're looking at is Bolton Mink is working with the design consultants for the Trump Highway fifty-nine project. They're one of the consultants, so we felt by using Bolton Mink, they're familiar with our community, and also they are already hired to work with this project, and combining this in part of the plans should be seamless with them doing the design for us and working with the consultant already.
I move to approve as presented.
Second. We have a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carry.
Thank you.
Okay, onto community development.
Okay, first item of business as we continue past the public hearings is P U D amendment number eleven, Southwest Mental Health Center. Southwest Mental Health Incorporated has applied for an amendment to their plan unit development number eleven to allow for additional signage at the property located at twelve-ten Fifth Avenue. If approved, the applicant plans to install a monument sign and a post panel sign. Property is located across from the library at the former central school site. At its August sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. Their recommendation was based on the following. P U D eleven was adopted by city council in July of two thousand twelve, following the recommendation of planning commission. P U D was adopted in order to allow for an office building to be constructed to serve the needs of the nonprofit alongside a residential treatment facility. Subject property was previously zoned R four medium density residential, which did not allow for office services. By establishing the P U D, it allowed for office services, but otherwise maintained the requirements of the R four district. Copy of the P U D was included as an exhibit in your packet. The intent of this P U D was to allow for an office building while maintaining harmony with surrounding residential uses, particularly in the event that a different use is ever proposed in, for the property sometime in the future. So, the owner of the property is rebranding and seeking to construct new signs on the property. The P U D does not include any specific provisions regarding signage and generally points to any non-specified requirements back to the R four. However, this is not explicitly stated. For signage, the main requirements for R four are specified as follows and quite restrictive. Based on the above, the proposed signs would fail to meet the R four requirements for signage. The P U D, however, does not explicitly state that the site is subject to those requirements. Applying those same signage requirements as a B two or B three district to this site would allow for a significant amount of signage on the property and would not meet the intent of the P U D. A rendering was included of the proposed signage in exhibit three C. Uh, one sign replaces the current building sign and the other two are for new signs. In total, the proposed square footage is just under one hundred and thirty-eight square feet. Uh, note that in one of those renderings, the location shown will be changing, uh, as the rendering showed it within the right of way, which is not permitted. Staff proposes the following language be added to the P U D. Under signage, a maximum of one hundred first fifty square feet in total sign. Areas shall be permitted. Signs located in the required front yard setbacks shall not exceed eight feet. Freestanding signs located outside of the required front yard setbacks shall not exceed eight point five feet in height. Illuminated signs shall be permitted. The proposed language allows for the signage the applicant is proposing along with room for adjustment. Staff believes this would not have any negative impact on the surrounding areas. With any land use request, it is important to consider the surrounding zoning and land uses to ensure the request will be compatible with the surrounding areas. All of the surrounding areas on all four sides are currently zoned R four medium density residential. City's two thousand four comprehensive plan identifies this property as downtown mixed use, while this again does not address signage, it does indicate this area is suitable for mixed land uses. Should council concur with the findings of the planning commission, it may approve the request change zone by passing the ordinance that's shown in exhibit three A. Any council member voting against the approval must state for the record their reason for denial. This ordinance requires only one reading to pass. Council action is requested.
Yes.
I see that one of the signs looks like it could be illuminated or it's an LED.
Internal, internal illumination, there's no flashing message sign.
Not like that super bright.
No, that was.
Because that would not be appropriate in that area.
Right, correct, in a residential area.
Right.
The information they presented was that it would be internal and essentially.
Back.
Back, yes. And, and like a soft little wet night.
Anybody else have anything?
They can point out this is just a one reading ordinance to adopt.
Move to adopt amendment.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carry.
Next item is P U D amendment number fourteen, this is Glenwood Heights, second and third editions. City Worthington is considering amendment to a plan unit development, uh, number fourteen to remove the minimum roof requirements including pitch. If approved, roof pitches less than six twelve may be allowed as well as alternative roofing materials. Uh, the legal description of the property includes Glenwood Heights, second and third editions. At its August sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting, the planning commission voted two in favor to recommend approval of the request. Two letters, which were shown in exhibits four A and four B, were submitted prior to the meeting. No other input was given during the public hearing, and we did receive a, uh, updated letter from one of the, uh, residents out in Glenwood Heights, first edition, arrived this afternoon, and you were all given cottons at the, here at the meeting. The commission's recommendation, uh, was based on the following. On June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, upon recommendation of the planning commission, city council passed an ordinance to rezone Glenwood Heights, second edition, from R one and R two to planned unit development district fourteen. This area was later, later platted, again to include Glenwood Heights, third edition. P U D fourteen was structured to follow many of the same covenants that Glenwood Heights' first edition is subject to, that's the existing neighborhood. These covenants in the first edition are not controlled or enforced or monitored by the city, and the adoption of a similar P U D was in response to requests from the residents of the existing neighborhood. A copy of P U D fourteen was included in exhibit four C, and the subject area is depicted in exhibit four D. Uh, includes provision about roofs, which reads as follows. All roof pitches shall be six twelve or greater, shingles to a minimum two hundred and thirty-five pounds, no locked tabs. City received a request to restrict, to construct a home that would not meet the minimum roof pitch requirements. Staff brought this request to Glenwood Heights Housing Committee. This group consists of city council and water light commission representatives, which are the two entities that funded the construction of Glenwood Heights. The committee was in favor of the, pursuing the amendment to remove the roof requirements from the P U D. The proposed change would eliminate the portion of the P U D that states all roof pitch shall be six twelve or greater and regarding the two hundred and thirty pound, two hundred and thirty-five pound shingles. City code one fifty-five point one eight eight states, planning unit development provisions are intended to encourage more efficient use of land and public services and greater amenity by allowing, under certain circumstances, more flexible means of land development and redevelopment than is otherwise permissible under the lot by lot restrictions in each district. Section one fifty-five point one eight eight B five lays out the objectives that should be sought when creating a P U D, including a maximum choice of living environment by allowing a variety of housing and building types and permitting an increased density per acre and a reduction in lot dimensions, yards, building setbacks, and area requirements. Council should consider whether roof pitch and shingle type requirements are necessary requirements to be included with the P U D, and whether the requirement is in the best interest of the city and the purpose of a planned unit development. Should council concur with the findings of the planning commission, it may approve the request change of zone by passing a first reading of the ordinance that's shown in exhibit four E. Any council member voting against the approval must state for the record their reason for denial. This ordinance requires three readings to pass. Council action is requested.
Comments, questions?
On the covenant, uh, Glenwood Heights, first edition, does that prevail on the second and third edition too?
No, those covenants do not prevail.
No.
No.
And I'm not familiar with, six twelve pitch, that's the angle.
permissible under the lot by lot restrictions in each district. Section 155.188B5 lays out the objectives that should be sought when creating a PUD, including a maximum choice of living environment by allowing a variety of housing and building types and permitting an increased density per acre and a reduction in lot dimensions, yards, building setbacks and area requirements. Council should consider whether roof pitch and shingle type requirements are necessary requirements to be included with the PUD and whether requirements is in the best interest of the city and the purpose of a planned unit development. Should council concur with the findings of the Planning Commission, it may approve the request, change of zone by passing a first reading of the ordinance that's shown in Exhibit 4E. Any council member voting against the approval must state for the record their reason for denial. This ordinance requires three readings to pass. Council action is requested.
I'm in Glenwood Heights, first edition. Does that prevail on the second and third edition too?
No, those covenants do not prevail.
So it has nothing to do with?
No.
And I'm not familiar with what, 612 pitch. That's the angle. Do we know what the angle house is pitch is?
Well, they have not actually submitted plans. It would be what they have described is a contemporary home that would have lower pitch roofs.
Chad, question? Um, I, the letters that you see in our packet and that you've received, I did speak to both of those parties on the phone. I spoke to Lyle and I see Lyle endeavor here and I did speak to Dennis and he did state that he was going to be out of town for this to talk to them. I did try to make contact with the builder also just to discuss this and basically the statement was in a contemporary, modern style home that's the type of, whether it's a craftsman or a Cape Cod or a Tudor, you know, all of the different building design things. What they stated was that it just doesn't meet the pitch roof. But by no means is this a house of any sort that's lowering any property value areas or things of that nature. So then I did seek out examples, these are not houses, this isn't the plan or anything like that. But for example, and this is a modern style house, contemporary house, very nice that just doesn't have the gable or hip style roof. Another one, a little more one level that are out there that are very beautiful homes that be a design standard of we're not lowering values of anything that were to be built around it or do anything. Basically just a different style. And that was what, you know, the construction style is just different than what probably we're used to here. But by no means a degrading of any property values and that, you know, this house, what I'm told is going to be a very nice home size wise, value wise, construction cost wise and what it is. So with that, I understand the, it isn't uniform in the look, but you can drive many places and see not so much cookie cutter neighborhoods anymore where everything looks the same, but at least meets the standard of value of what it brings to the house. And I think that's kind of where we're at in this of it doesn't meet the same style, but definitely meets the same construction value and standard of the homes that are out there and of new construction homes that we hope to see built and continue to be built out there in the addition.
Were there some of the other concerns from the, or were there any other concern from the housing committee that met regarding this?
Lighting and zoning?
No, that is a house. We talked about that, what he talked about, there wasn't really a lot more concerns. We talked a little bit about somebody bought two pieces of, or two parcels, we'd make into one so they couldn't sell off, like just a garage. But as far as house, like roofing.
Material wise, anything?
Just that if you have a house and garage, they have to be the same material.
Yeah, we kept in, you know, the things that would prevent anything not stick built on the site and that can be brought in, doing those sorts of things. But as you look at designs and, you know, if you're a fan of HGTV, things of that nature, there's a lot more of the modern style homes being built clean, straight lines, things of that nature opposed to what we would have here in the upper Midwest, more traditional gable hips, you know, style homes like that. So, you know, I suppose it wouldn't be a ton different if you went to, you know, certain areas of the nation and put a ranch house up. You know, you'd be different. But I don't know that in any standard, what we've been told here that this home would degrade in any structural value or property value to provide any sort of damage or that to the value of the homes currently in the Glenwood Heights area or future homes to come to it.
Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't, we don't have, within the city limits, we don't have any other residential areas that are required to meet these standards of.
That is correct.
That's correct, yeah. And I will point out that the Planning Commission that initially, and then came before the council, I believe, but back two years ago when it was initially approved, most of the Planning Commission was, actually when I look back, was the same, same Planning Commission at that, at that time, there's a couple new ones, but the majority of the Planning Commission that sat at that time also sat, also sits currently and, as you can tell, the focus was 42.
I did take the time to meet with some of the members to hear their input and thoughts on that as well and it was much the same. As long as the value wasn't looked at being a downfall for the neighborhood, that they were, they understood this and that designs at times change and looks are different and, you know, heck, you drive around now and you see black houses with wood stained, you know, accents and you're like, who would have ever thought of that before? No one sees one's got a different looking house around the lake too, you know, that they might have a pitched roof. Yeah, we have a few different that would meet what I would call a modern style in standard, but not necessarily anything that's below property value standards of what they might be next to or surrounded by.
I think for visual frame of reference, the one house in Worthington that is clearly contemporary is the Lyle and Connie Voss home, which was the Vance, the Vance home.
Next.
Cecil's next, yeah. Vance has built that in the 70s. Yes. At this time.
Any comments? Motion? Move to approve. Any other motions, please, in the second. Second. Okay, the motion is seconded for the first reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign, motion carried. All right. Onto committee reports, I have nothing. There is missing maybe?
No report.
Chris, no report. Dennis, no report. Okay.
We met as the joint public transit board a week ago and we have two buses that are not yet into service that were part of the grant that took fourscore and seven years or whatever it seems like to get, what was that?
19 and 20, I think.
Yeah.
20, 19.
Yeah, I mean it's four, five years before. They were received and now being put through all the checkpoints, lettered, done all that, safety standards all upheld on them and put into transit. So those now are going to happen. What that still does though is still leaves some of that are proposed out there, who knows, two, three years from now before they'll even be received, but hopefully those things are catching up in speed. The other big thing that we have discussed for a couple of meetings now is what to do with the current city bus route, which the majority of us on the board, the joint board, really frankly see as a waste of funds because it is not getting used even remotely close to what the dialer ride is doing. It comes from a separate funding pool. Chris has been doing a lot of research with DOT and the funding sources of it and we have more information to bring back now as to what would be, penalty is the wrong term.
Reduction in funding.
What would be the alteration in funding, not necessarily even reduction altogether, but the change in funding for us to alter those funds to be used in a much better source to provide public transit to people needing a ride in a much more available source opposed to what we have found to be not used really at all. We had months where less than 40 rides were provided in an entire month. And what we don't see on that is that very well could have been one person or two people the entire month riding multiple days. Less than 40, where if you take a look at the dialer ride program, 45 times the amount of use, 45 times the amount of use by the dialer ride program. And why wouldn't we want to put another bus into that system to be used is our look and thought on that. That would provide so much more availability, quicker routes, quicker access times, shorter wait periods, that by having another one in the system to go and bring people to where they need to go. I get the concept of be here at this time on this day and then it will bring you to a destination, whether that's a clinic or the grocery store or the government center or something of that nature from where you're at. But if you can pick up the phone and call and we're talking like anywhere from a dollar to a dollar fifty difference and you can go when you are available to go, when you need to go or when you want to go, is that better use than having a bus that shows up at the same spot at different times of the day and is not being used? So a little bit of work to do there.
How do they get dispatched out?
Same place? Same place. Yep. That's what we, that's what we want to do and that's what we're working on. You just have to go through the hoops because the red tape of funding of programs and funds that have been allocated for this one or that one, but if we can show, simply just show the numbers that 2,500 times the dialer ride is being used in a month opposed to 40 times for this bus route, that bus could have how many people on it going to different places in a route with a pickup of a phone to dispatch anytime opposed to following the same pattern and just not getting used. So.
Daytime hours.
Yep. Daytime hours. So needless to say, there's a little bit of frustration and a little bit of struggles in going through that and looking at that and knowing that we could better serve those without transportation, a way to get around town to the things they need by utilizing dollars much more efficiently and better. So, and that's the only meeting I had.
Thank you, Chad. Thank you.
Just an update here. Tammy McRum, the auditorium invited council to a special screening of a documentary about Ruley, Paul Summers LaRoche that is finished. She invited council to come over to the auditorium following the next city council meeting. She would do it here, but she thought. Ambiance at the auditorium would be.
We might be able to get popcorn here.
I think she said that she was gonna have some popcorn. So you can keep that in mind for two weeks. I think they had a lot of work involved with, assisting with that documentary. So you can, we'll visit that as time draws near. That's all I have.
Vote in here.
Vote in.
Second. Motion seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign, motion carried.